Okay, you ready? All right. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Middletown Planning Board for April the 3rd, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose name stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to do a little housekeeping first for our transcriptionist. We have one absent board member this evening, Ms. Hewson, and we also have attending this evening, Richard Krogan, our planning board attorney. Sexto Martinez Jr. is our building inspector. Also absent this evening would be Theron Atkins, our fire inspector. Okay. We're going to proceed with our agenda. Approval of March 6, 2024 minutes. I need a motion to approve. Mr. McCormick, I need a second. Mr. Britto, I need discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And before we go any further, let's let everyone know that anyone here for the first time this evening is considered a preliminary hearing, and the planning board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. So moving forward, we have 132 Wickham Avenue, which is a six-month extension. I need a motion. Mr. McCormick, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion.
This is the first?
This is their first one, as far as I know? Yep. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. First on our agenda, next on the agenda is 243 West Main Street, eating and drinking place of assembly, Grant Lee. Please step forward, sir. State your name for the record.
Yeah, it's Grant Lee.
And please tell us what you plan on doing.
I'm sorry?
Please tell us what you plan on doing.
Oh, okay. We're gonna do coffee roasting and then coffee serving for special, you know, the special coffee.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing?
Nothing.
Anyone on the telephone? Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'll go through the board for any comments, questions, or concerns. Okay, I'll go back to the public another, one more time. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'm gonna have a, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. McCormick, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I will go back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns? Nothing? All right. On the resolution for 243 West Main Street, eating and drinking establishment, place of assembly, I need a motion. Ms. Witt? I need a second. Mr. Madden, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Witt, I didn't see your hand.
No problem, I'm just on the other side of the room.
Next on the agenda, Dory Schalmo, 67 to 73 Hanford Street, kitchen cabinets manufacturing.
Mr. Chairman, if you can put that at the end of the calendar, see if they show up.
No problem. Next on the agenda, 8 to 10 East Main Street, eating and drinking establishment on the first and second floor, and an event room on the third floor. Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jen Hu with JH Architecture. Good evening, Chairman and board members. This project is existing three-story building, and the ground floor is a supermarket, fourth floor. Our plan is to reduce existing supermarket on the ground floor and get almost half of the size to be renovated into a seafood restaurant on the ground floor. Second floor, we plan to change to Mongolia restaurant, restaurant two. The third floor will be event room. So existing situation, second floor is some office, existing offices. Third floor is unfinished situation, non-occupied. So in our new building proposed to have all story redo the three stories, all three stories with sprinkler system. And we plan to add one more egress stair on left-hand side here, and with ADA elevator. So with new sprinkler system, with new staircase, egress staircase, and the new elevator will be in plan. Total square footages for this renovation is 13,972 square foot. That's about this project. I give back to Chairman for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing?
Nothing.
Do we have anybody on the telephone?
No.
Okay, I'm going to go through the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Mr. Madden?
Will these restaurants have rear access to, or just access off of East Main Street?
Since we add one more egress stair on the left, so we have two egress stairs access on.
Both on East Main Street.
And so we don't need rear egress anymore.
What about deliveries?
Good question. Delivery, we talking about, I mean, the client talking about with supermarket, so loading from the back supermarket, they share some loading area.
Stairs and elevator? So then there would be access for the deliveries from the rear going into the restaurants?
Yes, for now, yes.
Thank you.
Is that the design of the facade or windows?
Yes, that's proposed to more engagement with pedestrian people. That means more transparency, that's hopefully has more, you know, more attractive looking. So we submit application to the, to Maria for, because we need, also need approval from federal level, state level, so that's in the process. It's not finalized, but that's the intent, we try to get more transparency for the downtown area.
You had a discussion with Theron, I believe, about adding the staircase and adding elevator, is that correct?
Yes. We walked through the whole building, and we definitely were install three stories for, through the building, sprinkler system through the building, and also we talking about egress issues, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application? Again, please step forward. Then I'm going to need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed. Go back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
I just wanted to clarify, you cannot access this from the supermarket, right? You're only getting deliveries from?
Yes.
Okay.
There may access definitely from the front here, you can see the main entrance here with a new canopy, and the new elevator and the stair is here for vertical circulation.
Does that mean that the supermarket will only be accessed from the rear?
Yes.
Okay.
For regular patrons, or for just deliveries?
Back entrance for only deliveries for restaurants. The guests coming from the frontage of the main street.
Okay, okay, so there's not two separate entrances, one for the supermarket and one for the other floors of your restaurant? It's one entrance?
Yes, one entrance, yes.
I think that's confused.
Yeah, yeah. The supermarket, the supermarket entrance for everything will be in the back?
Because of parking at the back, so people going to supermarket from the back parking area, parking lot, I mean.
Is everyone clear? Okay? All righty. On the motion, or excuse me, on the resolution for 8 to 10 East Main Street, eating and drinking establishment on the first and second floor, and an event room on the third floor, I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. In the resolution, everything is taken care of as far as, and the architectural review board too is also in there. Yep, no problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Get your permits and everything else from the DPW.
Okay. I have another job, project coming, so I just.
You do? Okay, you know what? You're up next. Stay right there.
Okay.
I'm glad you're paying attention. All right. Next on the agenda is 9 to 29 Canal Street, Phase One Hotel. You might have to announce your name again and?
No problem. My name is Jen Hu with JH Architecture. Good evening, everyone. This project is the biggest historic building in downtown area with, it's a mansory building with a mansard roof tile. The client plan to renovate that into a boutique boutique hotel with 95 rooms, guest rooms. Existing building has three-story plus basement and attic, attic space. So basically, the ground floor, this is a, this is the side plan, you can see the new hotel, proposed hotel, new entrance is coming from, from here with a big canopy on here, and another entrance here is for commercial entrance, which separate, this pink line separate Phase One to Phase Two. For this turn, our application focus on the Phase One Hotel only. Phase Two will be commercial use with some restaurant or in the future, not for this, not for tonight. Tonight, we focus on this Phase One Hotel only. So basically, the ground floor is, if you see, our ground floor plan, we submit is hotel lobby, restaurant, hotel restaurant, ballroom, pre-function room, kitchen, and some guest rooms, of course, lobby lounge area. That's for ground floor, we proposed function for. Second floor, the program mainly is guest rooms and gym and services. And the third floor is same thing, most of third floor is guest rooms plus some services, like a private meeting spaces. So that basically, that's a program for this boutique hotel, and we already in the process of talking details with Marriott and other upscale hotel consultants. So for the purpose of getting financial and franchise, we need apply for get a planning board approval for this, for Phase One. So basically, that's this project, and the total square footages, we are talking about 134,000 square foot, that's a total square footages for this whole building.
Okay.
We, we try to use all existing staircase for egress use, and you can see here, the backside, we have the, we plan to have egress from the backyard too. So that's about this project.
Thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing?
Anything?
Anyone on the telephone? Going to go through the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'll go through the board for any comments, questions, or concerns. Ms. Witt?
So forgive me, so the first time this proposal came board, they were going to be using the parking down the street, where Acme was, right? Wasn't that, is that still the plan for this? So everything is staying the same as far as?
Yes.
All of that?
They own the parking also.
Okay, thank you.
Is there access to the parking, it's not north, but that area, that parking over there by the?
Yes, that's easement from here, can access from the back, back area.
Is there a plan to develop that to make it appealing to walk towards South Street and toward the Paramount Theater?
Pedestrian, pedestrian access, yes. Landscaping, yes.
You said that the entire project was 134,000 square feet?
Yes, including Phase One and Phase Two.
I'm sorry?
Including Phase One and?
So how big is Phase One, approximately?
92,000.
92,000?
Yeah.
So it's the majority of the property?
Yes, correct. That's on the, if you see, first floor plan, that's listed there.
And is there any proposal for use of the basement? Because that's?
Yes, that will be Phase Two, but for commercial use, that means potential use for a restaurant or some other commercial use.
And there was a question where the dividing line, where the hotel was, Phase One, Phase Two, and we made a determination, but that will be further defined by the fire department to make sure enough egress, elevators, the whole nine yards. Okay, I will go back to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Ms. Witt? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I will go back to the board one more time for any comments, questions, or concerns.
I believe the applicant is now seeking alcohol to be served, and also, the city would need to grant an easement for the fire truck for the ladder through the courthouse. That was not included on the original resolution, so the resolution will need to be amended.
Right. So we're going to go through the process to put the amendment in. Mr. McCormick, watch over me. Okay. First of all, I need a motion to put the resolution for 9 to 29 Canal Street, Phase One Hotel, I need a motion to deal with it, because we have to get it on the floor before we can amend it. So I have a motion for Mr. Britto, I have a second for Mr. Higby, that puts the resolution on the floor, okay? At this point in time, I'm going to add the amendment language, and that will be that the Phase One Hotel, including banquet hall and restaurant with full liquor license on a portion of the first, second, and third floor of the premise located at 9 to 29 Canal Street, and there also will be an easement for the city, the city to provide easement for courthouse for the ladder truck access. The city will grant this easement once the project is commenced. That is the amendment. I need to have a motion to accept the amendment. Mr. McCormick, a second. Mr. Britto, I need to vote on that amendment now.
Before we vote on a discussion?
Yep.
A question, when you say a portion of, for second and third floor, what about for room service of serving liquor to a room?
All I'm doing is including the entire hotel Phase One.
Okay.
That's the way it's written in the resolution, I was just trying to follow through on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
I vote yes. So now we can move forward and vote on the amended resolution as a whole. I need a motion to accept the resolution. Mr. Britto, second. Ms. Witt, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next on the agenda this evening is Green Eastern Inc., 36 to 36 and a half Walk Hill Avenue, a beauty salon with accessory retail. Good evening. Please state your name for the record?
Ms. Winnie C.
And what do you plan on doing?
Winnie, Winnie, and that's, I'm the translator, Jonathan Lee.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I, I plan to, to do the beauty salon here, and its owner operate.
Okay.
And you plan to have accessory retail supplies, right?
Mm-hmm.
For the beauty salon?
Associated Sales Beauty Salon Sales.
Yes.
Correct. All right. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? Then I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, that being said, I'll move on to the board. Anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Higby?
I don't know if everybody's, my application's kind of blank. There's no hours of operations, there's no owner's endorsement, there's no, so I just want to make, I don't know what your hours of operation are going to be, and do we have an owner's endorsement, and?
She's the owner.
Oh, she's the owner, okay.
Owner, she lives up on the second floor, and she wants to operate downstairs.
Great, and what are her hours of operation?
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Eight to nine.
Eight to nine, eight to nine.
Just, just a moment, and I'll get out the resolution specifically for this property. According to the resolution, it's hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Okay? What was your other question, Mr. Higby?
She answered it, I meant the words, and she answered it.
She answered, okay, fine. All right. Anyone else from the board? I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, second. Ms. Witt? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. I'll go back to the board one more time. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for Green Eastern Inc., 36 to 36 and a half Walk Hill Avenue, a beauty salon with accessory retail associated with the beauty salon, I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. McCormick, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Steven Van Ostrand, 23 West Main Street, cigar shop.
If you could put that at the back.
Okay, we have two at the back. All right, next up is 128 Wickham Avenue, International Express Courier Office, Zoli El Zitun Ramos. Good evening.
Hi.
Please state your name for the record.
So I'm going to be the interpreter.
Sure.
I'm Kevin, Kevin Corillo, and she's Suli.
All righty.
All right.
And what is, tell us what you're going to do?
All right, it's going to be all like, it's going to be a store, that she's going to be sending packages to our country, like shoes, or we're going to receive packages as well.
Okay.
So that's, that's going to be the store for.
All righty. All right, let me, Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? I open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'll move to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Yes, Mr. McCormick?
Are you just shipping packages to and from Guatemala? Is that the way I'm reading this correctly?
Yeah, we're going to ship, and we're going to receive packages.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't expand it to other shipping areas, or?
We are, we have a store in the Spring Valley, New York for 20, more than 20 years, so we working on that for more than 20 years, so just from our country people, we work.
Okay, thank you.
And with you being closed on Monday, you don't receive packages?
Actually, in that store, we open seven days, like every day, every day, but in this is new place that we're going to figure out, because we know we have a lot of people that, from Guatemala in here, so we're going to start working. If everything go well, good, we're going to, Monday, Monday to, like seven days.
You'll have to come back to the board if you want to open up longer.
Yeah, start a problem.
All righty, I'll go back to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. No one coming forward. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, Ms. Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. Okay. All right. On the resolution for Zoli El Chitun Ramos, 128 Wickham Avenue, International Express Courier Office, I need a motion for the resolution. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next on the agenda, Ashley Teresi, 76 to 86 Dulson Avenue, flower truck, temporary business movable structure.
Yes, hello, everybody.
Good evening. State your name for the record.
My name is Ashley Teresi Bodish.
And what do you plan on doing?
I plan on bringing a flower, well, a truck and trailer, portable truck and trailer to tire discounts parking lot on weekends come May, and selling flowers out of it.
Okay. I'm going to open the, it's going to be, Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anything in writing? Do we have anything, anyone on the telephone? Going to go through the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'm going to go to the board for any question, comments, or concerns.
The truck, or the bed, flower bed, however you're going to do it, are you going to keep it there over the weekend, or are you carting it away every day?
Carting it away every day.
So on the weekend, you'll drive it there, and then after you're done, you're going to put it, hook it back up and leave with it?
Yes. Saturday, we'll leave with it, bring it back Sunday morning and leave with it again. So nothing will be staying there permanently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, and the resolution has stated that if for some reason you can't move it, or you have to take it to the back of the lot?
Well, then we could get our tire change right in the parking lot. I'm sorry, I wasn't being wise. But if that's the only issue.
Okay, Ms. Teresi. That's fine, you know the parameters.
Yes.
Don't go beyond tire discount, keep everything in line, so that looks like Dulson Avenue and nice and straight, okay?
We'll make it look nice, I promise.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yes, Mr. McCormick?
What's the name of your business?
Teresi's.
Creative, thank you.
Very catchy, anyway.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Have you thought about expanding to the farmer's market in Middletown?
Actually, we have. Actually, we have.
Since you are, you know, going to be doing in Middletown.
Yes, we have looked into it. The only thing, our main selling season is May. It usually winds down if we do have overflow, but I am looking into the farmer's market come fall, when we have mums and that kind of stuff. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Madden?
Focusing on annuals, perennials, houseplants?
Mostly annuals and vegetables and herbs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Going to go back to the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. All right, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Higby, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I'll go back to the board one more time. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, on the resolution for Ashley Teresi, 76 to 86 Dolson Avenue, flower truck, temporary business movable structure. I need a motion. Mr. Higby, I need a second. Mr. Madden, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
You too.
All right. Second call, Dori Shalamo, 67 to 73 Hanford Street Kitchen Cabinets Manufacturing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, I'm Dori Shalamo.
Thanks, state your name for the record, thank you. And what you plan on doing?
We are a kitchen manufacturer for the five boards. We moving from Long Island to here, very basic.
All righty, Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Okay, and, okay, have the mailings. We're opening the public hearing. Anyone present, please step forward to comment on this application. And while the public hearing is open, before I go to the board, we did receive an email from Digna Roldian. And it says, "I do not support the approval of the building located at 67 to 73 Hanford Street for kitchen cabinets because there will be a lot of noise, dust, and too much traffic." That's read into the record, okay? You'll have a chance. Go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
What hours would you have deliveries?
We work in Monday to Friday, eight to five. We usually get delivery once a week because the facility is big enough. We're getting a truck, regular truck, not semi-trailer or something like that. We have a forklift, 10 minutes, the guy is out. And the property is big enough, so the truck is inside the property. We're not like standing on the street, if you're familiar with the building. It's all the way down, so you don't even see it from the street. I don't see how it's bothered to somebody. Very simple.
I assume since you're going to be doing some wood cutting, you're going to have the proper dust control within the building?
Correct, yes. We have a big unit inside or indoor, everything from the whole facility that was approved by Long Island.
Okay. It's, it's not uncommon, we had a concrete vault company there at one time, limited deliveries such as yourself, so just be a good neighbor.
Trying to bring business to the town.
Okay, hours of operation were eight to five. Okay, any other questions, board members? I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, second. Mr. Higby, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. Go to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, none being had. We will move on to the resolution for 67 to 73 Hanford Street Kitchen Cabinets Manufacturing. I do have to amend this resolution also, only because the gentleman has just given us a check today, so not casting any aspersions, but we have to make sure the check clears and we're ready. We have to put that in the resolution, so if it doesn't clear, you have to come back, all right? It's a formality, okay? So on this resolution for, pardon me, on the resolution for 67 to 73 Hanford Street Kitchen Cabinets Manufacturing, I need a motion and a second to get it on the floor. Motion by Mr. Madden, second by Mr. Britto. The resolution is on the floor. And now the amendment will be, the, it's just a matter of collection, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's just subject, we're going to add to the resolution, it's subject to collection. We just received the check, so we just want to make sure that the check clears. That's the resolution, amendment to the resolution. So I need a motion to amend the resolution. Mr., Ms. Witt, Mr. Britto, I need, discussion on that? No? Okay, I need, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.